All right, we're gonna call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, August 11th, 2025, here at the Bellflower City Hall Council Chambers at 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Present.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Hey, closed session items, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council recessed to closed session for five items, A, B, C, D, and E is listed on the agenda.
I have a conflict on 3B, property conflict.
Any other conflicts, recusals? Not seeing any? Let the record reflect that Wendy is gonna recuse herself on that item.
Yes. I have a conflict, I've been told.[72.12][72.12](Laughter)
On A.
3A?
Yeah. We got two 3As, ones in the other meeting.
Oh, I got 13A and 3A, okay. Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself on 3A.
Okay, let the record reflect that Mr. Coops has recused himself on 3A. Any others? Not seeing any? Okay, let's recess to closed session.
Wendy, you want Wendy and I to be up here, later or now?
Okay, let the record reflect that we're reconvening from a closed session with no reportable action. And we're gonna start an open session here at 7:05. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
All right, may I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Wendy Morse and the pledge of allegiance by Elizabeth Oba, the Director of Planning and Services.
All right. I pray this evening for all our Bellflower students who are finishing the summer break and heading back to school. I pray that they walk in with excitement, confidence, and a sense of peace for the year ahead. I pray tonight for our law enforcement, fire personnel, and our public safety department. My prayers for safety, both mentally and physically, as they work to keep our community safe. As always, I ask for wisdom and grace for our city staff and my fellow council members as we work together to serve the best interests of our community. In his name I pray, amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and follow me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is gonna be our city council announcements. I will start. Join us for this year's State of the City, which I'll be honored to host on Thursday, October 2nd, at 11:30 AM here in our own main event center located at 16400 Bellflower Boulevard. This annual event is an opportunity for us to come together as a community to reflect on the progress that we have made over the past year and share the vision and goals that will guide Bellflower's future. It's a time to celebrate our accomplishments, acknowledge our challenges that we've overcome, and look ahead with optimism and the purpose. Tickets are $50 per person and are available now through September 17th. You can purchase tickets online at www.bellflower.ca.gov or in person at Sims, Thompson, or Crowther's Parks. For additional information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. I hope you all will join us for this important occasion coming up, and again, that's October 2nd. Thank you. Mayor Protem Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The City of Bellflower is in the process of developing its first Urban Forest Master Plan, a comprehensive roadmap for the growth, preservation, and management of our communities' trees and green spaces. This plan goes beyond beautification. It plays a critical role in addressing climate resilience, supporting public health, and enhancing the overall quality of life in Bellflower. Community feedback is essential to this effort, and we invite all residents to participate by completing a short online survey. Your input will help shape the city's long-term vision, goals, and priorities for a greener and more sustainable future. Your voice matters. To participate in the survey, please visit bellflower.ca.gov. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2278, or email W L E E, that's W L E E, at bellflower.ca.gov. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Symphony Association will be hosting its annual concert in the park on Saturday, August 23rd, at 7:00 PM. The event will take place at Crowther's Park, located at 10500 Flora Vista Street. This is a free public event, and all are welcome to attend. Guests are encouraged to bring their own lawn chairs and enjoy an evening of live symphonic music in a beautiful setting. For more information, please contact the Bellflower Symphony Association at 562-888-4276. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its monthly morning mingle on Tuesday, August 26th, from 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning. The event will be held at the Chamber Office Conference Room located at 16730 Bellflower Boulevard. This monthly gathering provides a welcoming environment for local business owners, professionals, and community members to network and exchange ideas over coffee and pastries. The theme for this month is flaminga. Attendees are invited to participate in the spirit of the event by wearing Hawaiian or flamingo-themed attire, which will also serve as an entry into a special raffle drawing. We all are encouraged to attend and take advantage of this opportunity to strengthen connections within the Bellflower business community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Good evening, Bellflower. The City of Bellflower is pleased to announce that applications for the Bellflower Leadership Experience and Development, the LEAD program, is open as of tonight, August 11th. This program offers high school students a valuable opportunity to gain real-world experience by working alongside Parks and Recreation staff while developing essential leadership and life skills. Participation in the LEAD program is an excellent way for students to make a meaningful impact in their community. Applications will be accepted through September 22nd. For more information, please contact 562-804-1424, extension 2268. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item 10 is Public Comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Organize myself here, I apologize. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Okay. This is a time set aside to talk about anything that's on our... that's not on our agenda at Public Comments. I'm gonna start first. I know the Bellflower Court is here to introduce themselves. Let's get through all these young, pretty young ladies, and do that first, and then we'll go to the general public for any items they wanna discuss that's not on the agenda.
So I tried writing everyone's names, so if I missed one, please fill it in. Okay. Hello, my name is Eden, and I would like to share about our pageant. So again, hello, Bellflower City Council members and all of Bellflower. My name is Eden Escobedo, and I am the President of the Miss Bellflower Pageant. I'm here to share about an event that occurred in Bellflower, which was the 2025 Miss Bellflower Pageant. We had a great time and a great attendance at this year's pageant. I'd like to take a moment to publicly thank our dignitaries that attended and the visiting royalties from our local cities, including Artesia, Compton, Southgate, Linwood, Temple City, Norwalk, and Santa Fe Springs. It's always nice when we are able to have our visiting royalty visit Bellflower. And we also had many past Miss Bellflower royalty from various years volunteering and cheering the contestants on. I wanna share a big thank you to the contestants' families and friends that came out to support the program and for their daughters. I would also like to publicly thank and congratulate the 2024 Miss and Miss Teen Bellflower Courts for a fantastic reign serving our community. Here with me today is the 2025 Miss, Miss Teen, and for the very first time, Miss Junior Bellflower Courts, and they're excited to introduce themselves.
All right, young ladies, help yourself to the mic.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Sophia Galamis. I'm 11 years old, and I am the first Miss Junior Bellflower Queen.
Hello, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Valeria. I'm the Miss Teen Bellflower Queen, and through this opportunity, I hope to grow closer to my community.
Hello, Bellflower City Council. My name is Marilyn, and I am honored to say that I am the Miss Bellflower Teen Princess. Very excited to see what the upcoming year has for us as the Miss Bellflower Court of
Hello, and good afternoon, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jocelyn. I'm one of your Miss Teen Bellflower princesses, and I can't wait to get to know all of you and help serve our community.
Hello, everybody. I hope you're all having a lovely day. My name is Samantha Embrice, and I'm honored to stand here as your Miss Teen Bellflower Princess of 2025.
Good evening. Pleased to meet you all. My name's Athena, and I'm the Miss Bellflower Queen for this term, and I hope to work with you all in the future.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, anybody else in the audience wanna come up to the podium and chime in a few words? Hi, just state your name and then sign in, please.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Sanchez and everyone here. I just wanted to come back and thank you for... I was here a couple of weeks ago. I had expressed my concern about some neighbors, and I wanna thank Public Safety for taking care of the matter right away. It has improved because of what was done, and it hasn't ended all, but I'm hopeful that if there's anything else that happens, I have the backup from City of Bellflower. And I remember the mayor, Mr. Mayor, you had expressed that it was a society problem now, because we're having a lot of public nuisance, we have a lot of life bans, and, you know, during the weekday, I hear life bans on a Monday, on a Wednesday sometimes. Some of them are far, some of them are very close, and as I expressed before, sometimes the problem is that none of us say anything, and the problem doesn't stop. So if we don't say anything, we stay quiet for whatever reason. I'm a very outspoken person. I do believe in kindness and being a good neighbor, but when that crosses the line, you know, we have to abide by the rules and by the law, or, you know. Line order is very important in our blocks. I lived there for 30 years, and so I don't wanna move out of Bellflower. I wanna stay there, not because of the loud noises, and I know that even legal marijuana is also another issue, you know, where you can't open your window because it smells like the... You go to the market, you go to... It's everywhere. It's everywhere. So, yes, it is, it's a society problem. But I wanted to come back and thank you, and especially Mr. Sanchez, who connected me with the other two people, and immediately they took care of it. And so, like I said, I hope that, you know, this problem ends completely and the block or the neighbors that were more considerate with each other, and, you know, people work at night sometimes, you know, we're just not... We're not just, you know, neighborly considerations are, again, a society problem. But I wanted to express my gratefulness to all of you and also for Mr. Sanchez helping me out. Thank you so much.
We'll keep trying. Thank you for your kind words, it's well appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? When you decide in and when you're ready to state your name, and let us hear.
So, my name is Billy Servantes. I'm sure some of you already know because of my emails of noise complaints.
Yeah.
And basically, illegal runoff into the storm drain.
Right.
So I have sent several emails regarding, especially the noise complaint. Same thing with the past person that just presented. Just music, Monday through Sunday, either live bands or actual stereos, loud, beyond 10:00 PM. I've called the LA County Sheriff several times. Their response is maybe two hours after the fact. They only pass by and maybe ask the people exiting from the party, "Oh, is the party over?", and then they leave. But the last time I called the LA County Sheriff's, I don't think they even showed up. My cameras didn't show them coming through. You know, they at least need to get off their patrol units, contact the property owner, and state why they're there. Constant noise every single day. I'm the only one complaining right now on my block. I'm in District 5 on Felsen and Regent View, but other neighbors will be coming soon, and I'm complaining about the same individuals. Constant marijuana use comes over to my side. I invested in my house already for triple-pane windows to block out the constant noise, insulation as well. I mean, I'm putting thousands of dollars into my home for people that barely moved in a year and a half ago. Yeah, I've been a resident of Bellflower for 14 years now. I have a six-year-old and a 10-year-old. I don't think they should be having to listen to rap music depicting rape, profanity, and other type of music. That's not living free in this country. So I'm coming now in person and not just sending emails and telling you guys that something needs to be done. Mr. Brian McNerney refuses to respond to my emails and my calls, messages that I have left. I have all the emails in my Gmail for proof. I have also sent video evidence, picture evidence to everybody, to a few of you on this panel, not everybody. So, I mean, I provide facts, I provide evidence of the issues going on, but the issues continue. So I'm coming here to see what can be done. I'm really getting tired of it. I'm not gonna sell my house. I bought it for a good price, I have a good interest rate. I mean, the other people barely moved in a year and a half ago. I understand you can't force these individuals out because they're the homeowners, but at the same time, more forceful action needs to happen on behalf of the city, and LA County sheriffs need to do their jobs, too. I also work for the county, and, you know, in my department, if you don't take action, that wouldn't be allowed. So that's why I'm here. So hopefully, action is taken at this point, especially from you, Mr. Mayor, since you're in charge of District 5. Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to meet with Brian McNerney tonight?
If he's...
I mean, I've called him, left messages, I've sent emails, at least sent an after-action
email stating what actions were taken. I've provided Bellflower municipal codes, PC codes, and LA County codes that all fall under the noise complaint issue. The runoff, I did send it out to the EPA, they shot it down to the Cal EPA, then they shot it down to the LA County Water. I mean, you know, they're washing, you know, cement tools in the storm drain, nothing was done. Thank you.
Is Brian here? Oh, yeah. Mr. Servantes? Yeah. Brian's right there. Can he meet you out in the hallway there? This is Brian McNerney, our Public Safety Director. All right. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Hi, Robin.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and city staff. It's been a minute, but what can I say? My name is Robin Snow, and I'm the owner of Snow Funeral Services in Bellflower, and I just wanted to say a few things. Basically, is sometimes we just have to remember what we do have in this city and not reflect on what we don't have, okay? And then, I'd like to talk about something that we do have, and I'm not sure a lot of people even really know about it, but it's a hidden gem. I'd like to talk about Bellflower BMX, and they're celebrating their 23 years of racing experience. Tucked inside the Hollywood Sports Paintball Complex in Bellflower, California, BMX Track has been a cornerstone of the local community and a launchpad for champions since 2002. As the track prepares to celebrate its 23rd anniversary on August 2nd, it's clear that this is more than just a place to ride. It's a second home for hundreds of BMX riders, past and present. Over the years, Bellflower BMX has proudly hosted riders who've gone on to win state, national, and world championships, even Olympic gold. Recognized as one of the USA BMX Top 10 tracks in the Western Region for many consecutive years, the track is known for its high standards, welcoming community, and dedication to the sport. Beyond its weekly local races, the track hosts several annual events, including Race for Life benefiting the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, the Bob Warnicki Scholarship Fund supporting educational opportunities, and state championship qualifier drawing hundreds of riders from all over the region. Bellflower BMX has honored to host the SoCal Finals both 2019 and 2021, a testament for the hard work and passion poured into each inch of that facility. Leading the charge is track operators Tammy Eastep with the help of Jeff Wassinar, both longtime Bellflower residents who have been with the track since day one. The deep roots in the community and unwavering commitment to the track have helped us strive through decades of charge. The track is also proud to have U.S.A. BMX-certified coach, Robert DeWilde, a BMX legend and one of the first Olympic riders in 2008. Originally from the Netherlands, Robert dedicates many countless hours to coaching, mentoring, and maintaining the track, hoping to shape the next generation of riders with world-class guidance. Ask anyone who rides at the Bellflower BMX, and they'll tell you Tammy and her crew care deeply about the riders, the facility, and the spirit of BMX. Their passion and compassion are what keep the gates open, the track in top shape, and the racers coming. With the 2028 Olympics around the corner, the Bellflower BMX Track looks forward to hosting riders from all over the world. The excitement is building as the global spotlight on BMX continues to grow, and Bellflower community is proud to be a part of that journey. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Oscar Villa Gomez, represent Black Creek Library. So I'm here tonight, it's another hidden gem in the community. I'm here to announce the start of our Hygiene Kit Program, which is a partnership between LA County Library and the nonprofit Baby2Baby. So we're giving, what the kit is diapers and a pack of wipes. So we have sizes newborn all the way to size 6. You do not need a library card, you just have to come into the library and ask for a pack of diapers. Each pack comes with about 50 diapers, I think. So it's a good program, and it supplies last. We're hoping to get more stock from Baby2Baby, but, you know, we'll see. So hopefully, it can go throughout the year, and I just wanna, you know, spread the word to the community.
Yeah, that's a good idea to get young people into the library, the mothers and young people.
I mean, we try at the library.
Start them. Start them young in diapers.[1571.11][1571.11](Laughter)
Yeah, true. All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, anybody else next?
Hello, my name is Justine, and I wanna say, first of all, thank you for the growth that's been going on in the city. I'm a long-term resident, I grew up around here. I'm a district, I'm a resident of District 4, and today I'm here to ask for some help. The park on Clark and Flower, the like little resting area across the park, has become really problematic with the homelessness there. They're now living in the abandoned mechanic shop, the empty shop, and on August 1st, Friday, they set fire to a trailer that's like right next to my property.
In Clark and Palm.
Palm.
Palm, yeah, that's fine, okay.
I'm sorry, I work at the district, so that's...
That's mainly for the TV.
I'm always saying Clark and Flower.
Correct.
Anyways, so, you know, it's just really scary there now. The other night, I came out to take out trash, and a homeless guy jumped up from the bushes. And the kids are gonna be starting school, and a lot of them walk through there to get to and from our district.
You're talking about the little grass triangle area on the...
Yeah.
Southwest side, right.
It's so nice, because it's so shady, and the trees, and the benches, it's beautiful, but it's also very dark.
Yeah.
And, you know, we don't have the right kind of environment there, and it's just really scary, especially at night, it's dark there. I mean, even during the day, it's dark. When you drive by there, there's always a lot of people like hidden against the wall. And now that that shop is empty.
It's vacant, right?
Yeah, and then another house is vacant, so it's becoming like darker and darker on that street.
Since you see it every day more than we do, if the shrubbery and the plants and trees got trimmed, would that help? I'm just having to ask in your opinion.
It wouldn't hurt.
Along with patrols, obviously.
I mean, I hate to give up the green, because I love the green, you know, but it's just unfortunate that...
I don't mean gut it.[1716.13][1716.13](Laughter)
Yeah, and maybe lights, and I mean, I hate to get rid of the benches, but the people that are sitting on the benches are not taking...
We all see that problem you're talking about during 4 o'clock, when you go by there for...
Exactly.
4 to dusk, right?
And then the kids, you know, they're gonna be starting school, so you go there in the morning, and you find people that slept, you know, overnight. So it's...
Yeah, I agree with you, it's a problem.
Yeah, so, you know, whatever.
Wouldn't you, Victor? Yeah.[1745.21][1745.21](Laughter)
Yeah, just lights, trimming trees, I don't know. I'm, I don't know, you know, I know it's homelessness is a problem overall, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Justine, thank you for coming tonight to voice your concerns. Assistant to the City Manager, Wong Su's gonna give you my business card, and definitely would like to connect with you. And then I know that Brian McNerney, who's our Director of Public Safety, is outside, so if you don't mind talking to him as well. It is an item of concern, and like the mayor has said, it's something that we are having conversations about as to how we, you know, handle that park a little bit better. We do have a public safety called Southwest Patrol that do patrol the areas, but I think it's time that we do step that up a little bit more in that area, so...
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and you'll have my card, so you can reach me.
Thank you so much.
My cellphone's on there. Thank you. My cellphone's on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Justine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else wishing to come forward? All right, not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Okay, we have a public hearing for, you know, wait till the ladies leave. Thank you for coming, girls. We have a public hearing, item 11A. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe James is here for this one, and Beth's going to back him up if necessary.
While we're waiting here, I'm going to gin this up. 11A is a consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 25-29, a resolution approving an entertainment permit case number EP25-01, to allow for live music and dance performers, DJs, dancing, karaoke, and stand-up comedy at an existing restaurant within the general commercial zone on the real property commonly known as 14074 Woodruff Avenue, which is Woodruff in Rosecrans, I believe. All right, it's all yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is entertainment permit number EP25-01 to allow live musical and dance performers, DJs, dancing, karaoke, and stand-up comedy at an existing restaurant. The aerial shows an overall property as it's located the northwest corner of Rosecrans Avenue and Woodruff Avenue. The overall site is adjacent to, you can see Single Family Residential here in the north, and along the overall property, this is Single Family Residential on the very east. To the south is General Commercial in this area. To the southwest, this is General Commercial. On the west, it's divided, this area, this, the general commercial zoning line does a diagonal here, that's General Commercial, and then you have Single Family Residential to the northwest. The exterior photos of the restaurants, they show the elevation facing the parking lot, and includes a primary entrance. The primary entrance is a little hidden in these photos, but the primary entrance to the building, to the restaurant, is here. And then there is a staff-only entrance at this general location. On the west side of the facility, facing Woodruff Avenue, this is that elevation front here. There is an existing five-foot-tall tubular steel fence and gate that encloses that area. The area is currently not being used for any purposes other than emergency exit. This gate here remains unlocked during business hours. This was constructed during the COVID period, and there is a condition of approval in the staff report that requires them to bring this up to code or tear it down, so I think that was CLA Number 9. Chef Horneo Restaurant has been in operation since 2009 and offers a variety of fine Peruvian cuisine. For the record, the staff report indicated a Type 47 California ABC license. That was a staff error in the writing. However, the correct license is a Type 41 license that allows the restaurant to sell beer and wine, which is what they do. Prior to applying for the entertainment permit, the applicant had conducted events at the site utilizing the TUP process. However, their desire is to make them permanent, and this proposal is to allow for a variety of live musical performers and dancers with the intention of showcasing cultural Latin American dance. I'm going to say this wrong, but costume burst, that's a specific style of Latin America, like American dance, so... The number of performers are limited to a maximum of eight, and all performers will be restricted to the stage and dancing area of the restaurant. DJ and karaoke, a DJ booth will be located on the stage, and that would be the area where the DJ mixes and controls the audio. The DJ will also play recorded live music for the purposes of allowing guests to sing along with lyrics, that's karaoke. And the dancing also will be restricted to that area, it's the area between the stage and the dining tables. This is their floor plan, I'm just going to run through this quickly. This is the primary entrance, as I pointed out in the elevation, and this is the, this is the staff only. This leads to the backup house where the kitchen and office areas are. There's a waiting room here, or a lobby area. Immediately to the left is the bar area, and of course, this is the bar. This is the primary seating area, and here you can see the dancing area. And this area, there's the space between the dining and the stage, and the stage is here. This is eight feet by 12. As you can see on this floor plan, there's little black dots here, here and here. These are the location of the security cameras. There are 10 overall in the facility. You can see they do a nice job of covering all of the, capturing all of the interior of the building. There are also four cameras on the exterior, one facing this way and here, and then alone facing the parking lot here, and the side of the building here. Interior photos, again, this is the lobby area here as you walk in. These are a few of the bar area, there's the bar, and this is looking back towards the lobby area through the bar space and the seating area. This looks through, there's a low wall here in the center of the restaurant that you can see through, through the other dining area and the performance area. And these are additional photos, this is the primary seating area and the dancing area and stage here. This is another closer look at the performance and dance area here as well, and here is the existing stage. The stage was built, again, in the past, it is existing, but again, they had utilized this for other events utilizing the TUP process. And again, they want to make this permanent. The restaurants are of operations are proposed to be Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, with a sale of food and drink ending at 1:30 AM on those nights. Security for the restaurant will require patrons to use a primary front entrance adjacent to the parking area, and there are security cameras installed throughout the interior as shown, and on the interior also as shown. Additionally, private security will be present during the events, and will show up one hour before the events and leave one hour after. For the record, the city provided notice of this application to property owners within 300-foot radius. At this time, staff has received no contact or phone calls or emails from anyone noticed. Additionally, the application was placed, this application was placed on hold. They applied actually before a new ordinance, that new ordinance set forth a new codified section of the code, that being 5.36 for entertainment regulations. So this was, this application was actually submitted prior to that, and it stayed on hold until the applicant worked with staff, and staff believes that now they meet all of the requirements of that code, so that's why they're finally here today. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of this process, that, well, I should say that for the City Council to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documented evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 25-29, or to alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That does conclude my presentation. The applicant is here, he does not speak English, but he does have an interpreter.
Okay. All right, any questions to staff first, ladies and gentlemen? Go ahead. Dan, you can go first.
James, this is your first presentation to us, isn't it? I never missed a meeting, so you look new to me.
Through the Mayor Councilmember Coops, actually, I was here not too long ago with the entertainment permit for Mayor May. So this is my second go-around.
Right, so you're our entertainment guru.
I believe so.
As of now. Two for two.
So do you feel as though the square footage of this building is sufficient for what the activities they want to have?
Yeah, the square footage of the facility itself is just under 3,000 square foot, it's like 2,900 and change. There are a lot of seats in there, but, you know, through the fire code, that's all regulated by the fire code for the occupancy, but we believe, based on the events in the past that were huge successes, we feel that it would be a fantastic addition, if nothing else, to allow this type of cultural activity in the city, you know, to fill that niche. So, yeah, we feel that it meets that need.
And there's plenty of parking based on the fact that when they utilize it, most of the other businesses are not being run.
That's a great question, yes. Based on the existing businesses in that center, there's an insurance agency, and some, there's a few restaurants, a few other restaurants in that shop, but overall, most of those businesses appear that, you know, they would be closed when these events were being conducted.
And do you believe that, or have you seen any negative connotations from the public safety? Have they ever had any concern for any kind of activity there that the neighbors call in, say they're too loud or too late, or they're throwing beer bottles? Anything like that ever happen on the TUPs that have happened?
On the TUPs, and on the record, there have been no calls made to that site for any of those types of incidents.
All right, thank you very much, that's all my questions.
That was, can I? Go ahead, Sunny. Yeah? Oh, that...
Wendy, you're first.
Okay, so there's been no, I know you said no one, no one in the, there's no one in the audience that is a neighbor to say like, this is, this has been out of control, or this, you know, any of the events that have taken place so far?
Look, Councilmember Morris, I don't know if there is anyone present, but staff, during the noticing period of this, we have not received any phone calls, emails, or no one's come to the counter.
Okay, all right, that was my biggest concern. Okay. Sunny.
All right, Sunny, you're up.
Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you, Wendy. Mr. Atkins, a couple of questions here. The dance area, the dancing area, how large is that? How many square feet?
Councilmember Santa Ines, this floor plan is drawn at a 1 to 60-inch scale. And however, unfortunately, it is not dimensioned, but I did scale this, and I did actually walk this off and measure it. Looking at this, I would say that if that's eight feet, that looks like it could be, you know, between 10 and 12, and that's, you know, because this is 12, that could be 14 or 15, so...
Okay.
You know, it's probably 150 square feet.
So it's a decent size compared to the number of tables? Is there a chance for them to kind of move the tables to enlarge the dancing area? Are the tables and chairs movable?
The tables and chairs are movable, and that's a great question for the applicant. If they had an event that they felt needed a little more space, I believe that they could move those perhaps to that area outside on the west side, because it's not utilized. Perhaps if there was a specific event, they could move some of these out here for that event.
Okay. Is that one of the conditions? Because you mentioned here, dancing will be restricted to dancing area at the east side of the stage. Is that one of the conditions?
Yes, Councilmember, yeah, we did want to make sure that all of the entertainment was restrained to this area, both the stage and the dancing. It's my understanding, again, I'm not an expert on the type of entertainment provided, it's cultural, but it's my...
No, no, my question is, can you tell me what condition is that? Oh! Because I couldn't find it.
To your point, Councilmember, it may not be conditioned, and we could add that as a condition.
Yeah, because it sounds like based on the staff report, it's going to be a condition, but it's not one of the conditions. So if we can just clarify that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we can add a condition that would require it to be constrained to that area.
Good, and there's a statement here also, one of the conditions. Mr. McNurrie is not here. I just want to clarify, on page four, at the last sentence, a recommended condition of approval is included indicating that additional security guards may be required per the Director of Public Safety or designee. So I just want to find out to know, to give me some examples of what would trigger that condition.
Well, that's a great, that's a great question, that would be probably better suited for Director McNurrie.
Yes, unfortunately, he's not here. He must be busy, but we can hold up that question.
I think he's probably still in the lobby. I would suggest that, in these, for things like an entertainment permit, generally, if we were to receive a fair number of complaints about something, our first action would usually be to reach out to the property owner, express that we've received those complaints, and try to establish that conversation. Before we went to revoke an entertainment permit, we would probably try to work a solution with them. One of those things might be, hey, you need some additional security, because we've received these complaints, and that might address those complaints.
Maybe some kind of overcapacity or noise, or things like that. So this is an application for entertainment permit. Is there any existing entertainment that's happening right now?
There is no, excuse me, there, Councilmember, there's no entertainment going on there right now. They had, they've been holding off, and staff has been ensuring this, that they don't conduct any events until this permit comes to decision.
So there's no entertainment at this point? There's no DJ, there's no karaoke?
Not to staff's knowledge, no, and the applicant has said that right now, that they are not conducting events, no entertainment right now. They had in the past through TUPs, but not on a regular basis.
You have to be appropriate for the applicant later on, okay? Okay, that's it for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Santiness, and then if I can kind of go back to your question related to the conditions to the dance area, there is a condition, which is number six.
Number six, okay.
Where it talks about being substantial conformance with the plans. So the plans do identify a dancing area, and it does say that if there's future modifications that aren't in substantial conformance, that the director, which would be myself, can require modifications. So this is kind of an overall condition, but it would cover the dance area, as it's shown on the plans.
How would they know, though, going forward, if everybody else, everybody here is gone, not connected with the city, and there's some expansion of the dancing area?
There's plans on file. So, as part of the project file, we do have plans that show the dancing area.
Okay, okay, so that would be the trigger. Okay, all right.
Dimensions?
Uh, there's no...
Just a guesstimate from the...
Correct, there's no specific dimensions, but it does...
But it's the area.
Correct, but the floor plan does show the number of tables and chairs, and also the stage. So if we were to do a site visit, we could estimate, you know, how many, or see how many tables and chairs were shown on the site plan versus, floor plan versus what's out in the field, as well as the stage area.
So as long as the tables are not moved, and that area is used only for dancing, then that should be okay?
Correct.
All right, very good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
I'm not for sure, but I believe in the presentation for Sunday through Thursday, it said till 2:00 AM. I know in the plan, in the condition of approval here, it says 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday. I just want to make sure that that's correct. It wouldn't be past 12:00 AM on Sunday through Thursday?
That's correct, Councilmember, yes.
Mr. Sanchez, do you have anything yet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. First off, I just want to...
Do you want a little time? Do you want a little time?
No, no. So my first, first of all, I just want to say I'm excited to see the idea and the concept come. It sounds like they've had some success with TUPs. My concern would be with the patio access. And I think Member Mayor Protem Santiness touched on it a little bit, but I know that with Mirame, we had some type of a condition of approval with regards to their back access because there's residents nearby and so forth. Given the fact that there's residencies here, I'd like to make sure that we have some kind of a condition here that prohibits this at a certain point of time for any form of access, because what we don't want is, you know, music to be playing, dancing to be playing in here, and then the doors opening and closing, opening and closing, that music's going to leak out, and we're going to start getting complaints here. And I would hate for that to happen to them. And so I just want to see if you guys, what's your plan here, how you want to manage this? And then lastly, on this section, my other concern was there was a mention of moving tables and chairs into this area. This is a main arterial street. I mean, it's Woodruff. This would become an eyesore. I don't think that's what we want. To see tables and chairs stacked up in this area. So I would just caution that as well. So I don't know if that means some form of, you know, plastic vegetation around the fence, some kind of a, something that would protect the visual, what's the word? Aesthetically pleasing. Yeah, if stuff were stored there, yeah. Because it's, right now, it's wrought iron fence, that just, everything would be see-through. So if that's going to be the case.
Jim stated that that was a condition of approval to fix it. I don't know what to code means.
Remove it or make it conform?
Does conform mean a screening?
Right, it could be a screening. Is that, I want to make sure, is that what we're asking?
Councilmember Sanchez, so again, backing up all the way. So I want to read COA number nine, "The permitting must legalize or remove the unpermitted fencing surrounding the patio area." So through that process, if they decide that they want to remove it, it would be gone. Then I'll get to the second part of that. But if they wanted to keep it and go through the permitting process, it's a sturdy date. I'm not a building official, but it looks pretty firm to me. They could possibly, we can ask them to put some kind of screening. But nevertheless, there is area, this doesn't show, this floor plan doesn't show it, but there is area behind the building here where there's, this is, there is a rear access here behind these inline shops that is screened from public view. It's screened from the residential to the north. So that's a possibility.
That's what you meant earlier, then?
Yeah, if they wanted to move tables potentially on a temporary basis, that area.
Okay.
But to your point about the noise, we do have condition number 18. I'm going to read it. "Entertainment cannot be audible from the exterior of the premises. All doors and windows must be kept closed during the hours when live entertainment is offered, except for ingress and egress." And I know you're worried about people coming and going, but the intention here is that these are used for emergency-
Emergency only.
During events, the applicant has stated that a security personnel person would be stated there full-time during the events to not allow people to come and go.
Very good. And that's what I want to make sure we have on, that we're doing that exactly, that. Because I think that's how we manage the other situation. Okay. That's good for me. Is there an intent at any point in time to change alcohol license from 41 to 47?
That's a great question and probably need to ask the applicant then. Okay, all right. Okay, I'm okay for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have a question regarding the emergency exit there to the potential patio area. Could that door, I can just see it open for air, and I can see a nuisance possibly there? Should we condition it for having an alarm on it? So if it opened, it buzzes? It's an emergency exit, you know? Just saying, this might be thought for us up here. And the intention of all this entertainment, is it our belief that it's still a restaurant, not a nightclub?
Indeed, Mayor, that is the intent, that this is a restaurant that offers some entertainment.
I will add, Mayor, there are very specific conditions that were put in place to prevent that from occurring, such as no cover charge. There is also a condition related to what occurs during entertainment, meaning, I think I saw in there that there were some conditions related to, you know, no go-go dancers, no wet t-shirt contest. Those were included as conditions of approval.
And one final question, which came up a couple of times already, is about the size of the dance floor. To me, that's, with that many seats, to me, I don't, I'm an old guy, so I don't know how this works much anymore. It's been a while. But dance floor looks somewhat small, but is the occupancy of this building based on how many seats are there? Is that correct, right?
Yeah. Normally, it's based on the building code, and it does depend on the number of seats.
Number of seats and tables. So if the dance floor needed to be bigger and they had to lose 16 seats to make it bigger, would that be not compliant then? Or to say three or four of those tables come out to get another six feet depth of that dance floor? There's 150 seats in this place.
Yeah, so if they took out-
I get it, not everybody dances.
If they took out seats, they would actually be, you know, be an advantage to them. Because again, they're only allowed so many people in per the number of seats.
Well, yeah, you have 150 people in there and you just, you don't have 20 seats, you lost 20 seats. So is there a problem there with the occupancy? I'm just thinking potential.
Mr. Mayor, if I may piggyback off of you. My understanding is occupancy is based off of square footage. So if you remove tables and chairs, the occupancy load technically allowable occupancy would increase, wouldn't it? If it's standing?
It's actually, I'm sorry, it's a combination of seats and area. So it is a combination of both. Currently, on the plans, it's a maximum occupancy of 155. And that is with the number of seats and tables that are shown in the plan. Conceivably, that number could go up depending on the math that's involved and the exact building codes. James and I aren't as versed in the building code as it relates to occupancy, but it could very well go up. If it is a concern, we can definitely add a condition of approval limiting the maximum occupancy if needed.
Okay. Are we?
Well, no one's going to know that. I mean, yeah. I hope this place is a hit, I really do, but I'm just, you know, now is it going to be with too many people in it?
Just a follow-up question. If they remove some tables and chairs and expand the dance area, that will re-invaluation of the conditions, right?
That is true. Correct.
So they're going to expand it?
They can't expand it.
That is the area for dancing.
Well, yeah, the conversation came up twice already, and one of the things was we can move the tables.
Right.
But they shouldn't, because otherwise-
Yeah, well, I get that, but that's why I'm talking about it.
They're expanding it. So I want to make sure that that's in the condition.
But actually, I have a follow-up question. Do we have a process in our municipal code that allows for two levels, two types of occupancy? One that is, you know, a restaurant traditional, and then one that allows, when it has entertainment, that it's allowed to do some of what has been mentioned, which is the removal of some chairs and tables?
I am not certain, to be honest. Yeah, that would fall under the building code.
But I read it the same way that you're reading it, Mayor Protem, is that there isn't, it's not allowable to move the tables?
As of right now.
Right, exactly.
Maybe that's a conversation we need to have with the applicant, is that a big enough dance floor? Because now's the time to fix it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coops?
So does, if we grant this entertainment permit, does that mean that it goes like a CUP with the property, or does it go with the operator?
Councilmember Coops, it goes with the operator.
All right, so if they change his hands, then they have, we're going to reexamine this to make sure that this is appropriate, correct?
That is correct.
And back to what we were talking about, moving chairs and tables, I think one of the concerns we might have, and we'll hear from the operator, that it doesn't, because he now has an entertainment permit, and they're, it's the only place in Southern California, we have Peruvian dance, the whole place doesn't become a dance hall. You know, they'd take all the chairs in the middle and the tables and say, listen, we got a band, we got a DJ, we can really just survive on the bar and some auxiliary chairs and tables. And that's, we want to try to keep the plan as it's been presented tonight forever. And I think that's what's causing the discussion. It should not become a dance hall, you know? Thank you.
All right. We good with questions now with staff? Anybody want to open a public, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Got a motion on the floor. Mayor Protem, Sonny Santiness, and a second by Councilmember Sanchez to open the public hearing. Okay, this is the time we hear, without objection, that'll be the order. And then this is the time we'll hear from the applicant. So the applicant for the entertainment permit, please come up with an interpreter.
The idea to have the dance floor is- To have customary dances to bring our Peruvian over here.
Para exponer nuestros costumbres como que son bailes típicos como puede ser de Perú, Colombia, México. Y eso nació la idea. Y como tenemos en el lugar que ya tenemos un escenario que nunca se movió, yo encontré ese lugar así y los mantenido ahí. Y nuestros mismos clientes nos piden que si pongamos algo de música para- poner y generar más trabajo y generar un poco más de trabajo para todos nosotros. Entonces, la idea se vino desde que hubo la pandemia, empezamos a tomar esa idea.
Can I, but interpreter, can you get that mic in front of your mouth? Because I'm not hearing anything you're saying. I'm not picking it up because you're getting overpowered by the applicant.
And don't respond until he finishes.
So I'm sure you're having the same trouble.
Other than Sonny and Victor, no one's getting it.
See, you got it.
Sorry.
Do it like Otani.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Basically, what he said is he continuing-
Can you identify yourself first so that we know who's talking?
My name is Juan Alarcón. I'm a very close friend of Agustín Fernández. The idea of him is keep our traditions as Latinos, so from Colombia, we are from Peru. So to bring some of our culture here. So we are not a specific one to build a place for a nightclub like a nightclub you know here. It's a place like all Latinos can feel better inside. So it's not for a nightclub, specifically a nightclub. That's why sometimes they can play karaoke, singing our songs from our countries. So also for if some DJ coming, they can play the music that we like. So about the space of the dancing area, Latinos like to be very crowded, very, you know, we don't like normally dance feet away. We like to dance very close. It's our culture. That's why you see a small space, we see, we think it's another space for our culture. It's different mind and different idea about the dance. We dance very close. We are very friendly, you know? About the thing, about the noise you mentioned, the walls are very, very old. They build from bricks. So the noise cannot pass the bricks. If you see some place with a very high or very thick walls, the noise cannot pass to another place. What Agustín says, he worked here in Ciro Bellflower. I know him since he started the first restaurant. It was a small restaurant on Bellflower and Roscans. It's a very small place, and he grew and get another place between Roscans and Woodruff, and he generated more work for Ciro Bellflower. So the intention for this is generate more work, generate more jobs for the people. It's what the real intention is. He's a very good man. I know, I'm his friend, and I can talk to him. So I work for LA County, so I'm putting my word over here that he's a good man, and he wants to do good things for the Ciro Bellflower. He doesn't want to do, you know, some crazy things, maybe somebody here about Latinos. But he's a good Latino, and he wants to give a better, better place here in Ciro Bellflower.
And he's been here, what, about five years, seven years at this location?
Since 2009, he starts the business here. Yeah, and he never has any problem with anybody. So he's a good man.
And question that came up, so Latinas like to be close when they're dancing. So you're okay with that size? Because if it needs to be adjusted, we should adjust it tonight for you if we go forward. So you're okay with that size of a dance floor?
The table you saw over there, we can move the table anywhere we can, but normally, that is enough space.
That's enough space, okay.
Yeah, if you go to a Latino nightclub.
I'd like to make that statement, but in Spanish. It's not the applicant to understand it.
Okay.
Don Fernando, Don Fernández, buenas tardes, es un placer que verlo y conocerlo aquí. Ahorita esta noche tiene una oportunidad de agrandecer el área para bailar un poquito más. Porque si no lo hace hoy, va a ser muy difícil hacerlo otra vez. So sería, ese es el tiempo de hablar con nosotros. Nosotros somos, como se dice, somos, nos gusta el negocio. Queremos que tengan un buen negocio. So what I'm saying is that this is a chance to, an opportunity here to modify the dance floor, that we are business friendly, you know, and that this is the opportunity. Because once, if it's not tonight, then it'll be difficult to do in the future. Also, just for the record, I feel like this is the kind of place where my mom and dad are going to go. It's going to be very more traditional to, and my mom and dad are, you know, in their early 60s. So I don't foresee this being a place, this is more a family oriented, like, you know, parents, my parents, grandparents, and things of that nature. That's the feeling I'm going to, I get from this, from the restaurant itself, and then from the type of music that they're going to present, I think.
You want to ask them what their average age is? That way you'll know.
Nuestros clientes mayormente son más adultos. Todos casi somos familiares.
Yeah, mainly families, adults, older adults. Not young, not young, not young folks. Yes, more traditional music.
Good.
So good crowds.
Yeah, you can tell them that's what we're worried about. Can I just tell them?
No.
I can tell them what we're worried about.
What are you worried about?
No, we are worried about the younger.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sí, tiene más preocupación de la gente joven.
Additional to the comment that you mentioned for the gate, the wall. Okay, what happened on the left side of the building is before, we showed pictures about how was before. You can see homeless literally sleeping on the corner. Okay, what happened? His family is here also. He has a 10-years-old kid. So he's very afraid about the homeless, because we don't know the intentions. Some homeless are very good persons, but we are not sure for all homeless. So that's why he put the wall, you can see the pictures also, because it's for the safety. Basically, it's for all the safety, and normally, the homeless use that place as a bathroom. So we can, so I saw also physically when that happens, and we took pictures for proof that what is the real intention? It's not enlarge the restaurant. The intention is safety. The intention is safety.
Yeah. But in the conditions, it's not, that fence isn't a code. We're gonna want something that's more aesthetically pleasing. It may be too tall for it being that close to the sidewalk. But you're gonna have to meet with the building department to figure out what that is.
Okay.
Because it's not permitted, you know, the fence.
We understand that, but we are not.
I see what the problem you're trying to fix. Maybe another way.
It's fixable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the end of the world. You can fix that. We just have to submit.
We can follow the planning.
Yeah, you can talk to staff and they'll help you process that.
And do you see any reason that, that door would be left open during business hours?
No, because if you see the pictures over there, it's very next to the stage. Okay, and we, we did not use that door.
Okay, so our, my comment was earlier, when you heard it, was to put it like, make it like a, if it opens up, it's an emergency exit, you have to be able to get out. But then it sounds an alarm. That way you'll know if somebody's propped it open or something like that.
Okay, the requirement is put an alarm over there when it opens.
Yeah, something like that, yeah, it's a minor thing. Yeah. I think what we don't want is people going out of that door, going to have a cigarette and come back in, back and forth. You know, that's, we could foresee that and that's why.
We understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment. When I was reading the application, I was very excited. You might be shocked. I've been to your restaurant twice already. My favorite is Pisco Sour. And the mixto ceviche, okay? And the deep fried filet with trimmings on it. Because the reason I went to your restaurant right away.
Steer fry? With fries?
Yeah. And the reason I went to your restaurant right away was I came from Peru to visit. I visited Machu Picchu, Aguascalientes, Lake Titicaca and the floating island. And I was, I was impressed with the food that you had. So immediately, I took my wife to your restaurant. So we've been there twice already.
I am Peruvian and I know a lot of restaurants and one of the best is his.
And I want you to succeed, but my question earlier was, is there any entertainment existing there? And the answer was no. Is that correct? There's no entertainment at this point? There's no karaoke, there's no dancing?
PUP.
Okay, no.
Because I was impressed with the karaoke singers there when I went. So I, I'm kind of wondering what happened.
When we have some birthdays, the people, you know, hire some, some person to bring music to the, to the, to the restaurant. But, you know, is, if, because it's a family restaurant, if you can celebrate your birthday and you want to sing, you can bring your, your person to put your, the music for you.
So I just happened to go there on the right day?
Yeah.
That there was a birthday celebration?
Hey, you're lucky.
Yeah, because I, I went there twice and it happened on both occasions. So.
That's why, that's why the people ask him to have, let the license to do the karaoke permanent or whole.
So does it happen that often? Because of all the, of all the, what are the chances of me going there twice and having karaoke? And they're, by the way, they're good singers. And someone not even looking at the monitors, you know? So they know what they're singing.
The family, it's very common to people wants to, the clients who came likes to do the karaoke thing. Sometimes he cannot deny because they are clients. Year, you know, for years, they are clients continuously coming to the restaurant.
So there's, there's no extra charge for that?
No.
So Councilmember Coops can go there and then plug in his.
Bring his karaoke machine?
Microphone and sing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's good to know.
Any day you come, maybe you went only weekends, but you want, during the week, you can, you can hear. He has a sound system to play the videos from Peru you can find on the, on the different.
Yeah, I wonder during the week, you know?
Yeah, you can go to, during the weekdays and you can see the, the system works for the videos that we play on the.
Well, I should have known that sooner, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So I wish you success because I think there's something special, especially for the city of Bellflower.
Thank you.
And one more question. Your old business on Bellflower and Roscans? Is that the one on the shop, the shopping center?
Northwest, northwest side of that corner.
Yeah, right next to the liquor store. Right? It's small, okay, okay, I remember that.
Very small thing.
Yeah, I know, very small, yeah.
Four tables, that's it.
Okay, okay, I remember that. Okay, very good.
You ruin, you know?
Okay, well, keep it up, okay? Very good. Thank you.
Okay. You have any again?
Well, I've got, I wanted to tell you, historically, I made the deal to buy my business in 1975 while sitting in your building, which is called La Brick Restaurant. 50 years ago, your business was open. So I always have good thoughts about your business because I was in business 48 years with that store. But I made the deal in your, in your building. That was when Jerry Miller, remember Jerry Miller? Now I ring a bell, right?
He only know the name, but he doesn't mean.
No, that was the guy that was in charge of the property. Cogburn Realty.
He was a realtor.
The current name of the owner is John Lee.
Okay, but that, that center has been there many, many years and it's always had a good reputation, as have you.
He have reference about previously how was the place before. He, he get the new place because he start to growing up and the more clients are coming, he needs more space.
In 2009, he's got, well established, you know?
Yeah.
16 years.
2011, he moved to this place.
But he's been there a long time.
How many years was he at his other place? How many years on Bellflower Boulevard?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
All right.
And also he, if he's opened the, about the area, it's okay, we can enlarge a little bit, just in case.
Okay. The dance floor, yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, do you, does, in the future, not now, does he ever want to change the type of liquor license you have? Or I mean, alcohol license?
Maybe in the future. Now, it's not in his plans.
Yeah, gotcha.
Not under his plans.
Okay. You have anything good?
Just don't remove the Pisco Sour from your menu, okay?
Pisco Sour is considering under the.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that at the end.
Wine and.
Exactly, yeah.
Beer liquor. That's why he serve that.
Okay. All right, we're gonna hear, hear from other people in the audience now. So if you have any last thoughts, share them with us. If not, sit down for the minute and we'll see if anybody else wants to talk about this. You may have some cheerleaders out there.
Thank you, Mayor.
So anybody else in the audience want to come and talk on this item on the, you know, the public hearing? Okay, not seeing any.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santanés and a second by Councilmember Coops to close the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. Any new questions to staff? No?
Nope.
Okay. Any further, any further discussion or?
Nope.
I think, if, I think if we, if somebody was gonna make a motion, I think we need, you wanted to say it?
Yeah.
It was on your tip of your tongue.
I'd like to make the motion, but with the condition of the alarm being added into it, I.
For that door entrance.
For that door entrance, but, so.
Before you make the motion, Councilmember Morris, did we want to have that further discussion on that flexibility of the dance floor or?
Yes.
Okay, did we have that already? Did I miss it?
No, we didn't. But I think their last words was if, you know, I think we ought to just give them some grace of, to do it. I mean, that they have our blessings to do it.
Let them do it with staff, basically. Okay, I'm cool with that. I'm great, I mean, I'm, I'm good with that.
Let staff earn their keep.
Okay, so staff will handle that.
And then my only thing is, is, yes, I think that iron fence, something has to be done. You nailed it, it's not to code or whatever, but do something. If they gotta have to have something, do something better. I don't know what that is, but we'll use staff's vision for that. Is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. We understand they have a problem with the homeless, that, in that nook and cranny. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion from somebody if, if we're there yet.
I can do it if you want.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if this helps with the motion maker. Condition number 27 already requires a security plan be approved by the Director of Public Safety. So if the direction from the council is to add in an alarm, that direction is heated and we'll just make sure that the security plan reflects that.
Alarm door, correct.
So that we don't have to add an additional condition of approval.
Just for the exit.
Yeah.
Good point.
Ready, if you're ready.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, to adopt Resolution 2529, a resolution approving entertainment permit case number EP 25-01 to allow for live musical and dance performers, DJs, dancing karaoke and stand-up comedy at the existing restaurant within the general commercial zone on the real property known as 14074 Woodruff Avenue.
And that would be as conditioned, as conditioned with the new amendments?
Yes, with the alarm and the new amendments, yes.
Second.
A motion on the floor, Councilmember Wendy Morris and a second by Mayor Protem Sunny Santanés. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santanés?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
You're good. Okay, item 13A is a consideration, possible action to provide direction regarding two city-owned parcels, whether they should be considered for future park development. PJ, you got this one?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, before you begin, Dan has conflicted out, he's got property near the potentials. So I'll be in the other room.
All right. Sorry about forgetting you, Dan.
That's okay. I'll be back.
You don't need to stay if you.
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Have a good night, thank you.
Okay. 13 people.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Ms. Milano, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're seeking your direction regarding two city-owned vacant parcels and whether they should be considered for future park development. As you know, Bellflower is a built-out city and vacant land is very hard to come by. With that, you have also tasked us with implementing the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan that encourages the city to actively find creative solutions and identify vacant or underutilized land to improve the park acreage deficit. This, directly from our master plan, this slide is our elephant in the room tonight. This, our goal is 316 acres of park space in Bellflower to meet the standards. And this is in your master plan. Now, will we ever get there? Highly doubtful. But I ask my kids all the time, how does someone eat an elephant? The answer is always the same, one bite at a time. So let's take a look at both properties, looking at the history and definite, definite challenges of each and how the master plan has already provided some conceptual creative uses for each. The first property is 9443 Artesia Boulevard. And this property is approximately 11,000 square feet and has been vacant for some time. It was purchased by the Redevelopment Agency in 2003, then subsequently purchased by the city from the Successor Agency around 2017. It is currently zoned general commercial along this section of Artesia Boulevard. Therefore, a zone change to open space and a corresponding general plan amendment would be required for future park use. In recent years, there has been limited interest in the site for housing or commercial development due to its small size. There was one developer briefly that considered a multi-unit, a multi-unit housing, but ultimately found the site limitations unrealistic for the project. Due to the limited size, the parcel will require innovative and space-efficient design solutions to maximize community benefit. Despite its location in a commercial zone and the size constraints, the parcel presents a unique opportunity to create a pedestrian-oriented pocket park that enhances park equity, provides passive green space with self-directed recreational amenities in an underserved area. And so this is the current status of the lot, what it looks like. And this is from the master plan, a couple of the, just overlays. So on the left is the general overlay in the neighborhood. It is on Artesia Boulevard, surrounded by commercial properties. On the right are just some amenities that were in the master plan related to this specific site. And you'll remember, both the sites we're gonna discuss tonight were used as conceptual, potential park sites because they were some of the only city-owned lots that we have right now. So in a size, a lot this size, there is some potential there of what that can look like. And then this was the rendering, the concept rendering for that property. And what it could look like with a, as a pedestrian park with a few different amenities. When we worked with them, we wanted to make sure even the concept designs, you could visibly see all the way through it, knowing the problems we have at certain parks and designs. But this is what that property would look like if we were to develop it into a pocket park. And this is just concept.
Can I interrupt you a minute?
Yes, sir.
On that, yeah, go back to.
Oh, I didn't, let's see.
While we're focusing on this, is this artist rendering the same width as the lot? Not this one, but that picture there, because it's got a parking lot on it.
No, the parking is not. So everything up to the parking.
So we don't have parking?
You would not have.
So we have to imagine what we're seeing here without parking?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that.
There would never be any parking here. The, because we looked at a couple other properties this week. The one thing that we did notice, and just as a reference from a, a current park perspective, the width of this lot would allow, I believe, for a brim turnabout right there.
Right, okay.
It is wide enough. There are some others we've looked at recently which were way too thin and there's no way in the world. So that's the only thing, but no, this, the, the, the potential of this park is no parking whatsoever. It would be a pedestrian walk-to park.
So this has a potential of the brim, the brim in the front, like we have.
I believe so and ultimately.
And if that was, would the traffic engineer allow something like that on a busy thoroughfare like Artesia Boulevard?
That's something we'd have to investigate when we got to that point.
You're still talking in like really big picture, high-level conceptual, do you even want us to explore these things? Those are my questions I needed to ask. But anyway, we can move on now. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
I, I like the concept of this pocket park, but I just want to kind of temper our expectation for a pocket park, considering the comments earlier as an example from residents. So I just want to make sure that we address those kind of issues because. considering the comments earlier as an example from the president, so I just want to make sure that we address those kind of issues because so my question is how, if this is developed as a pocket park, how will this be different from, let's say, the Palm Street Pocket Park? As an example.
And that's the catch-22 you're going to be faced with moving forward with any park development, and it's an enforcement mechanism. My personal recommendation, any new facility that we build moving forward, a brand-new park facility, lighting needs to be included, cameras need to be part of the infrastructure, all of those things, and potentially gates like we have at Constitution Park for the, where you have controlled access. So, and there are design standards that we can apply, but ultimately, when that park's open, it's going to be unsupervised and it's going to come to enforcement, but there are certain design elements that can be built in to these parks. But you're going to have that challenge with any new park, and you have a master plan that's telling you, we recommend new parks, so that's the balancing act.
Yeah, I get that, but we just need to be.
Yes.
Kind of very cautious.
Absolutely.
Because we don't want to add more problems than what we have now. I see a lot of benefits, but there's a lot of bad actors out there, that's the problem. If there are no bad actors, we can do more pocket parks that we can think of.
Right.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that is part of the consideration, thank you.
I'll add to that comment, Mayor Pro Tem Santaynez, I totally get that, I hear it. I think you're absolutely right, and I think that's where the broader discussion has to be played with our public safety and, and our law enforcement, and how we proactively, you know, manage our parks. I think that's the bigger conversation that needs to be had too, because it's one of those things where it is a catch-22, but it doesn't mean that it's not worthwhile, and I know we all know that. So the question is, what can we do to remedy the real problem, the bad actors? And, and that's the hardest part to answer, but I think it's one that we need to start to find a solution towards. Because if not, the only people that hurt is the community, I drive by the Clark and Palm all the time and I can see why no one else is going to go sit in that area and enjoy the shade and enjoy the, you know, and so, yeah.
Okay, that was going to be nice, but since we're blowing this one up.
I'll blow it up, let's go.
We can't even, the Palm Park with the lady here that maybe you've been complaining about for a while, we can't even keep that clean from four to seven. And we're going to, you know, we want a vision here to make this look pretty and whatever without parking, that would be a worse problem. You know, we went through Constitution Park, we closed it down because Sunny was trying to get a, was it you trying to get the park on Coke Street? Under the power lines, and then we killed that because we couldn't even keep this one.
Exactly.
You know, now we walked away from money spent to get Constitution fixed, and then we put up the twelve-foot fence all the way around it, okay, we're good now, but now you got to park your lockup, but it's working.
It's working, and that could be one of the solutions.
We fixed that one, but Palm, Palm Street Park, we can't fix that. And so I don't see any reason doing anything with something like this if we can't fix, if we can't get our house in order.
But I think that's the key comment that Director Milano is making, is that whatever we do here, we have to design it with the intent to already manage these problems. So security cameras, lighting, the fencing, art from the get-go, so that the park never gets to a point where we have to take it, or, you know, we, what would happen at Constitution Park, I think, is, is what I'm hearing.
So we build a jail, a secure facility. That's going against the wrong too, also.
Especially.
Open space, it's not open space because it's got a big old jail fence around it.
And that, that concern is well-heard, and you'll see with the next property as well. Something that I think should be considered by the council, and is in the master plan too. This property won't fix what I, or fit what I'm about to say is the other version is to have a park, and it doesn't have to be as large as a Sims Park or Crowthers Park. It could be a small quote-unquote pocket park where you can put a mini community center on it where you have staffing there. This one won't do that probably because it's just, it's just too small, but that's something that should be considered in the future when we're looking at design and different properties as well. Whereas the next property I'll show you, that's what we're considering, is something a little more major where it's completely self-contained, there's staffing on it, something like that.
Well, my concern besides what you guys were all saying when I saw this was, this would literally only be something that you could walk to from the generalized area, if you lived across the street in the apartment buildings or, because there's a lot of commercial around it and then some living, but not a lot.
Correct, the, the north side, I think Beverly Street is behind there, that's all residential.
Right.
That's what, and then there's some apartments directly across the street, yeah.
There, there would be, it would only be a walking type of thing.
Yes, there's lots of challenges here.
Yeah, there's lots of challenges.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
So this is what we're calling the Riverview Park Adjacent Parcel, it's approximately two and a half acres. It's, half of this parcel is already developed as part of Riverview Park. It's zoned as open space and consists of an old vacated nursery. The site is currently landlocked with no vehicular access, there's minimal infrastructure, and it's near the Southern California Edison Right-Away, also where Riverview Park is developed. The property has been considered for redevelopment, both residential and commercial in the past, but due to infrastructure challenges and the associated costs, that development did not go forward. Any future, future development will require infrastructure improvements, including access, plumbing and electrical services. But these challenges are less problematic with open space and with parks than with a commercial development. These things can be addressed as we move through a design phase, if we did want to move forward with this as a potential park. Potential strategies here include, could include modular buildings, solar-powered solutions for lighting in order to minimize the long-term maintenance and operating costs. Due to the size, the location, and this being adjacent to both Riverview Park and the riverbed, this parcel presents a significantly higher level of viability for park development, including all the linkages that would be needed in a very high competitive grant program. It checks every box for us. This, this site, which was referenced in the master plan, could accommodate active recreation, programmed use, controlled access, and onsite staffing. Its strategic position enhances connectivity to citywide park and the trail network, also establishing it as a potential regional destination from neighboring cities. So while each of these sites present challenges for development, the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified them as potential opportunity sites to expand the availability of parks and open space in the community. Should the City Council desire to advance conceptual planning on either one of them, we'll seek to apply for grant funding for development. And just a quick note, we didn't want to get into the weeds here on grants, but we have some county money already set aside specific for planning, which would be the next step for any of these to get us to sixty percent plans, so we would apply, we would, we can apply some of those funds, and then that's the grant we would be going after today, is a large design grant, to get it designed for the next round next year, which we could go and ask for a large amount of money for either of these. A little more on this property. So this is what it looks like from Riverview Park, it's all of that tan fencing. I have these two photos here to show you.
What happened to that fence?
Well, that, so one of the big things they want to do is connectivity, so we've already got a natural connectivity here.
You got me.
And that didn't, that didn't happen in one day.
Uncle.
And you would think, you know, okay, this was vandals, this was, which it probably was at first. But I've walked out there several times over the past several months, and I've got dozens of people walking their dogs, walking their bikes into Riverview Park and then out. So as soon as I saw that, the kind of lights went off for the county grants that are coming off of the connectivity and partnering with different groups for grants, so that's why I had these pictures here, so you can see the natural trail connection. This is the concept that's in the master plan. These are the different amenities that could go there with the staff building on the right, and that's where the controlled access would be, we would, you can have a lot more programmed activities here, we can seal off the fencing, do different things. We can combine different types of grants, including art grants, including partnerships with the water replenishment district, with just education pieces at the building, just, there's a lot of different opportunities here for a very large park, it's not a traditional huge sports complex, but it's more of a court sports complex where we could, it could definitely be something very nice for the city as an opportunity. And this was one of the concepts for that that came in the master plan as well. And so the recommendation tonight is just further discuss this and then provide direction to staff on which, if any, of these properties may be viable to, for us to start going down the road of seeking grants, seeking design for park development, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Just one thought, I'm going to go first first. So as we, you know, with Robin Snow was, Hollywood Sports has a Bellflower BMX track, which is pretty well-known through the circuit, the BMX circuit, they go to champions across the states. Is that something that, they're going to be, you know, BMX is going to be losing their track most likely from the MTA buys, if they buy the property for a train state, train maintenance yard. Yeah, or domain or whatever they do. I'd like to have some, you know, thought, not, I know we're not here to design nothing tonight or whatever, but I just would like to think that this would probably be a good place for it if powers-to-be decide, you know, is an option. I just wanted to put that on the table and on the record, is for that, is, it may not be the right thing for it, I don't know, but just throwing it out there. But it would, you know, it would fit there, and, you know, if the city could, you know, eventually take over maybe something like that or have a facility for that, it's just a thought. Any questions, Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, just, just a comment, I mean, to me, I'm very excited about this PJ, because especially when you mentioned about the, the modulators. Because if you go back to the Riverview Park, it's, the challenge there is, we cannot put any structure, because it's owned by Edison. So by basically combining these two parks together, we have the structures in our property utilizing the whole park combined with Riverview Park, so I think it's a win-win. And the second thing here is with the modulators and all these things, as you envision, there'll be staffing there. So it's going to be kind of a full-service park, so it's going to be a real good park, as far as I'm concerned, so, so I'm for it.
Anyone else think it's done? Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make comments, obviously parcel two is, let's go for that, that's a no-brainer, easy to do. With regards to parcel one, I see the difficulties and the challenges with that. And so for a future item, I think we need to have further discussion as what do we do with that area, because we've owned it since two thousand and three, and it continues to be vacant, and, you know, we, thanks to Public Works, it got taken care of and it's, you know, it's looking better. But nonetheless, it's an item for discussion that needs to happen at some point in time, and whatever that looks like, you know, I hope we can have it sooner rather than later. I could see us designing that even in a fenced environment, but, you know, just doing some form of landscaping that blocks the fencing, you know, so it doesn't look so, you know, jail-like or whatever the word you use, prison-like. Because I understand those concerns, and, and I think we're going to have some of these concerns over here at this, at park number two, or parcel number two, and I think fencing is going to be required there too. And I think the only difference that I would ask from the type of fencing that we did at Constitution Park is that it, we incorporate more greenery into it, plants, shrubbery, I don't know how you would do it, but at the same time, so that you can lock it at, at night, and, because I, that's what I heard. I heard that you would be providing key entry points during operational hours.
No one would be coming into that building without staff seeing them.
Exactly.
So we.
Which is different than our other parks.
The vision is, the thought would be, you could host, you know, pickleball tournament in there where people are coming into the entrance and coming out, different things like that, so there's a lot of, but again.
It's a controlled park.
It's a controlled.
Yeah.
Park, yeah, entry and exit.
And so I could see us doing that, and I think we should, and that's another conversation, but Constitution Park, right now it's just that fencing around it, and I know this is not what we're talking today in this item, but we should have a further conversation. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any final thoughts, Wendy?
Nope, I've heard what all you say.
Yeah. I'm for Riverview Parks, or Andy's Nursery is becoming an indoor park system, I think that's due. My question was, you had the potential pickable cars, and then there's a parking lot on that, on that slide, does that parking lot line up with the existing parking lot?
No, so.
So how do you get cars in that parking lot?
Again, all concepts.
Has to be figured out.
And that, that could be a challenge that we never get to, and.
Just walk to it.
There, there is.
More park instead of parking.
There is some other options that we can do, but, and I've already let our consultant and grant writer know that that, we may come to final construction day where we don't have that access, but it's what we want to do.
Question, Mr. Mayor, for staff, is it one or the other, or could we do both?
One or the other, I think.
Well, the, the direction I'm seeking tonight is, are we considering either, either both for park development moving forward?
The way this came about was, I mean, one, you've had a number of conversations about each of these properties in various capacities, and, but you recently had a conversation about your Parks Master Plan, which identified these two properties, among other things as well. And so as PJ is looking at grants and he has a grant writer locked in to do some of these grant opportunities now, we thought, hey, let's look back at the master plan and say, we have these two parcels that have been discussed, how serious are we about pursuing these? And there's obviously limited opportunities for grant funding. Do we want to consider one that's more feasible or one that's less feasible, or consider both of them and split the, you know, split the opportunities? We wanted to put it out for you guys to discuss, knowing that each of these has hair on it and challenges associated with it and unique characteristics that make it work and not work, neither is perfect, but certainly we can work with it if that's something you guys want us to do, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to have the conversation.
Does parcel ones, if that were to be considered for a separate type of different design, obviously it's a different design, it can't be similar to parcel two, does that impede the ability of parcel two to succeed as a project?
No, it, no, they can be considered completely separate.
For one, it'd be separate grants for each.
Right, separate grants for each.
Well, so for, for the current grant opportunity that's ahead of me, right, right now.
Right.
I've talked to the grant writer, they have fully eliminated Artesia as being a viable option because of the connectivity, the regional destination, that kind of stuff. Those things are bigger in this particular grant writing, so for this particular grant, Artesia wouldn't even, we would only, I was considering, I was considering doing both, which is why I brought to Ryan, but working with our consultant, they said, Artesia's not viable for this grant opportunity. So they said, the big one is the, the bigger regional park, it just checks all the boxes, so for future, yes, it could be considered.
Why you're asking that, we didn't want to lose money, but, you know, we don't want, you know, worst thing to do is take free money, build something that you can't protect.
Sure.
If you guys tell us that parcel two happens to be your priority today, PJ's going to go charge forward and work on that. That doesn't mean we let the other one sit and do nothing with it, if an opportunity comes along, of course, we're going to bring that back.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm asking for, because right now we have an unprotected park in Palm Park and in that corner area, right? And we're having difficulties there and challenges there. We've learned from Constitution Park by doing the fencing and we've, people are using it again and people are enjoying it again, people are, it's not in bad shape anymore, we don't have the problems that we were having there. So do we take an opportunity, not now, but do we give staff the permission at a future date when opportunities arise for them to come back with a design where this is also a fenced park, closed, closed off normally typically, and just designed differently, so it doesn't look like Constitution Park? That's kind of where I'm getting to, because they're not, what else are we going to do with this parcel?
We can design all we want with, we can still go that route, but we don't have to say it's open space. That way, we can, we can make it open space anytime, and if a developer comes by and says, hey, I want this, I got the parcel next to it. You know, we're not, if we put it as open space and we start changing the zone on it, then we're locked out.
No, and I don't, I don't think we're changing zonings today, but I think.
No, but that's the process that we would have.
Right.
That would be all wheels in motion, right?
Yes, and if I could, so the city right now has two hundred thousand dollars in TAP funding. That would not be going to Riverview Park, what we're going for Riverview Park is the grant to get. to get 60% construction document, which is much more costly than that. We could apply, we're, we're looking for a place to park those TAP funds, which have to go to design. If you wanted to, we could apply those to another parcel, any of them to design something. And we could do that and that's, that's money that has to be spent and we're always looking for, and it's really design money we're, we're trying to spend.
What is the deadline for that to be spent?
That was my next question.
I believe it's end of 2026.
Okay, we got time.
Okay, so we have time.
All right, that answers my question for now.
So we have time.
Yeah, we can bounce around a few other ideas for that, so.
Yeah, let's look at other options also, you know. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a park. It can be used for other options.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Could I just ask a question? And it's kind of off-topic a little bit, but could any of those funds be used to do any, any design stuff at Palm and Park, like lighting and stuff adding into it?
No, and we found, it's new parks and that's been a struggle and a fight that I've been battling with the county, because we're built out, we don't have new parks. Why can't we use this money, which is supposed to be ours? But it's, it has to be new parkland, which is why both of these were, I was thinking, new parks, we, we've got these properties, so.
I get it.
From a pure resource allocation perspective, I would suggest to you that it's better for us to focus on one. If, if, if one is potentially viable in your mind's eye at least, it's better for us to say, okay, this is a good option. We think we, there are some workable paths with this one. Let's take it forward, go see if we can get some grant funding to accomplish that. If we're successful in that and we have a brand-new fantastic park and we still have another parcel sitting there that we need to go explore, all the more reason. But if we can, if we can focus our resources in a good direction, I think that's probably the best path.
And, and just, this is a long process to get a brand-new, I mean, we're looking at it at the Oak Center. So one grant will be for planning, the next grant will be a much larger grant that we're hoping to get for, you know, nine, $10 million.
So he's looking at five years?
Yeah.
All right. So what the consensus is, I think parcel one's on, I think your consensus is, I don't know for sure, but parcel one's on hold and then parcel two's goes, so. If we're all agreement, then somebody want to make a motion?
I don't think so. I think staff direction.
Oh, is it just staff direction?
I think we have direction. We got, we got.
You got direction now?
They got it, they got it. All right, good.
Let me get Dan.
Yeah, we better get Dan back in here.
Thank you, sir.
We have an overlay, overlayed zone due next. What happened at short meeting? Are you, are you, are you hot?
I am really hot.
Are you cooking?
I thought it was just me though.
How's those long sleeves doing today?
It's hot.
I was like.
You have half a long.
I know. I like one time did this and I'm like, okay, don't be obvious.
How's the temperature out there, guys?
It is hot in here, huh?
And there's less people out there.
Hey, Dan, how's the air conditioning in the hallway?
Much better, Beth. I think that door over there.
All right.
It's better already.
Okay, 13B, Mr. Smoot, you want to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam 13B, consideration possible action to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement file number 805.2 in a form approved by the city attorney with De novo planning group for the preparation of an arts district overlay zone and related general plan amendment. This is an item that you've had much discussion on the past, so I've asked Beth to come back to you with an update and some of the history and with the next steps if you want to go forward. So Beth, take it forward.
All right.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council. As Ryan mentioned, there is, the item before you is actually in agreement to be executed. However, since it has been a while, I'll start with some background regarding the project. So in terms of the main concern, there were some concerns that were brought up about Clark Avenue. And those concerns related to commercial and office buildings being vacant or underutilized. A lot of these properties are considered legal non-conforming and have not been redeveloped in some time or since the building was originally built. On the right-hand side, you'll see some photos of Clark Avenue and I will say that these photos were taken on Clark Avenue between Flower and Alondra. The general goals of the city are to revitalize commercial corridors and to develop unique and functional housing solutions. In terms of how to address these concerns along Clark Avenue, there's a lot of solutions out there. However, there were some, there was some discussion recently about establishing an arts district to address the problem. With the creation of an arts district, it would encourage redevelopment and then also encourage more local arts programs. The city is in support of arts programs and has been supportive of art projects in the city. This slide above is just some examples of public art throughout the city. You'll see that there's a handful of murals that are included. Most of these were initiated by the city. A sculpture that was done many years ago was part of a public art program, utility box being painted. Those were all city initiatives. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, this is an example of where the city requires new development to install their own public art pieces. So as the city council knows, we do have a public art program in the city that requires that all new development provide public art pieces or in lieu of that, to provide a fee to go to public arts. Between November 2022 and July 2023, we hired a consultant to do an initial study of Clark Avenue. The study focused on the physical conditions and limitations of the study area. It included opportunities for redevelopment. It included allowance for arts uses and programs and also included short-term and long-term implementation action items. The study area was composed of two sections. Area one is between Alondra and Flower Street and area two, which is in green, is between Flower Street all the way to the southerly border of, which is Rose Street. This is the zoning map of both sections. On the left-hand side is area one. Clark, Clark Street is essentially this dotted line down the middle. And you can see on the west side, the zoning is commercial with some R1 zone properties. And then on the east side, it's zone commercial at the corners and then R2. This is Bellflower Unified School District and this is our Sims Park property. I will say this corner piece, which is the women's club, is also zoned open space, not commercial. The study showed that within area one, this section was the most walkable and also the most quaint section of the corridor. The study also pointed out the physical limitations that are out there and that a lot of the properties have very little lot depth. So redevelopment to demolish and reconstruct new buildings would be difficult. The study also showed that ideally, a lot of these buildings could be rehabilitated, improved or occupied by new tenants and that this section, area one, was the most opportunity for redevelopment. I'll also point out, you can't really tell in this diagram, but on both sides of Clark Avenue, there are a lot of non-conforming properties where it's a commercial zone, but there's residential uses and that makes it non-conforming. And then also on the east side, there's all these R1 zone properties, which are developed with some commercial buildings, which also make that non-conforming. So on both sides of the street, a lot of non-conformities exist. And then moving on to area two, this is the zoning map of it. This is a longer distance from Flower to the 91 freeway. It's mostly commercial with some high-density zoning. And then south of the 91 freeway, all the way to Rose Street, it's predominantly commercial and light industrial. For area two, it consists mostly of residential, commercial and industrial uses. These properties are different from our area one in that most of these properties are occupied, they are larger in size, but they could not be easily redeveloped due to these sites already having existing uses and businesses there. One of the findings from the study is that area two will more likely respond to market forces as opposed to city policy changes. The city council previously held a study session regarding this study. The council directed staff to begin the process of establishing an overlay zone. We also received direction to continue our housing element implementation, which would include zoning standards to accommodate for additional housing along Clark Avenue and to bring the matter back to the city council for further consideration. In terms of where we're at, this is the current project status. Since the study session that was held by the city council, our consultant conducted a community survey. The point of the community survey, which was included in, as an action item in the study, was to gauge residents' appetite, so to say, for more arts programs and to get feedback whether or not they would support an arts district. The survey occurred throughout the Summer Street Fest of last year and during the farmer market events. Following that, we also had an electronic survey that was circulated with the community. Generally, in terms of the responses of the survey, which are included in your staff report, we did receive strong support for more arts programming and the establishment of an arts district. I will point out for the negative feedback that we did receive in the survey, most of the negative feedback had to deal with utilizing funding elsewhere. So for example, there were some comments related to focusing on public safety, homelessness and crime as opposed to establishing an arts district. The second item that was mentioned again is that we did complete our housing element implementation. With this item, we established a housing overlay over three intersections within the study area. Those intersections were Clark and Park, Clark and Alondra and Clark and Artesia. And those intersections now allow for housing, including mixed use, which would, which would include artists' lofts. And then lastly, staff sought out some consultant services to try to find a consultant that can help us in preparing an overlay for an arts district. There were a total of two proposals that were received. After review of those proposals, we found that De novo Planning Group had the strongest proposal and it was the most comprehensive. And so with all of that, that brings us to today. The action before the council is to authorize an agreement with De novo Planning Group that would essentially do the, excuse me, they would establish the arts district overlay zone. So again, the consultant will establish the arts district overlay zone, which was an action item that the council gave to staff. The total term of the agreement would be a year and a half and the total cost would not exceed $130,000. I will say, in addition to the overlay district or the overlay zone, the consultant would also do the necessary general plan amendments and the environmental clearance that are necessary to establish that arts district, or sorry, to establish the overlay zone. Once that's completed, it will come back in front of the council. So that action item for the rezoning and the general plan amendments would come back in front of the council at a later date. And then following the completion of the overlay zone, the council may choose to incorporate different arts programs to support the arts district. For example, in the study, it mentioned that the city could initiate a vacant storefront art program where different artists display their art pieces in vacant properties or vacant buildings. It also included a mural painting, or sorry, a mural and utility box painting program that the city could initiate. And those are all just different programs that the council can consider in the future to help support the arts district. And then at that time, you could choose to allocate additional funding and/or consultant services for those programs. So the recommendation tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with De novo Planning Group to prepare the arts district overlay zone, general plan amendment and environmental clearance, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any question to staff on my right?
I have a question. So as we have prepared our new two-year budget, do we have $130,000 allocated somewhere?
Yeah, Sonny made sure.
I know it wasn't Victor, we're trying to get crosswalks with him.
Councilmember Coops, yes, we do have some money budgeted for consultant services generally and we do have funding that could cover these costs.
So if we were to choose this group, you know, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I don't have a lot of art background. Is there a city not too far from here that we could take a field trip to? See what it is or trying to, examples of what could be done? And whether or not De novo would conduct that service, hey, we, I like to think they've done this before. And that say, hey, we went to this city and they had this kind of a street and this is the kinds of things that we were to install and it's grown and gotten better. Is that a possibility that we do a field trip somewhere? Many years ago, Ray Dutton and I went to Burt Street in.
Brea.
Brea, just to see, and they had a Johnny, and this is, now, this is what we need. And if you look at ours downtown, a lot of the things that we saw and improved upon came from Burt Street. And I'd like to think that we could find a city, I don't want to go to San Francisco, but I'd like to go to Pasadena or somewhere where we could see what it is that we could try to do to improve Clark Street. But again, that, I'm just throwing it on the table, let my other council member speak to that. Thank you. I'm good.
Wait.
I, I do have a question, right, this is just to, for the agreement with De novo Group. But are they gonna still consider looking at both sides, area one and area two? Or is this, and this is just to open that up to them to look, to explore all the areas?
Correct.
Both areas, I should say.
Correct. So the action item tonight, a lot of my presentation was really just some more background because it's been a while since we last talked about it. But the action tonight is actually to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
An agreement with someone?
Yes.
De novo Group?
And De novo would do that. They would analyze both areas and then propose some, I think I mentioned it in the staff report, but they would essentially determine what best land uses would go into those specific areas. They would also analyze each of the areas to see what would work best. And then we would come back to the council once that's completed for formal action.
Okay.
You have anything, Victor?
Sure, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would add to, and I'm glad to hear that they're gonna continue analyzing both areas because if you put back that map of, of the entire Clark Street, which I think to council member Coops's point, I think we need a field trip to identify what we want to do with this entire corridor, because there's a lot of possibilities, a lot of potential. Can you put the zoned one, the one with the zonings? The art districts that I'm familiar with, LA, Orange County, in Orange County and LA County, they tend to be, or even in like City of Commerce and stuff like that, they tend to be in more industrial areas because they are away from residential. So that's kind of the arts districts that I'm familiar with because they end up bringing forms of breweries, restaurants, entertainment, other components with the art. It's not just art on a wall and that's the end of it. It is, it's a vibe. It is an atmosphere that gets created. I, no disrespect to Preppy Smith, but I'd kind of disagree with its analysis or findings that one side is more walkable than the other. I think both are walkable in their own perspectives and their own ways. I think area two has, is already zoned for both sides and then also has walking crosswalks. So I would. So I would make sure that the de novo group kind of comes at this with a blanket approach than, you know, this pre-conceived, uh, mo, uh, information?
Analysis.
Analysis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so that would be my only request, and those are my only comments. I, I, I think both areas though have their potential, and, and I'm excited to see how we can get to where we want to be because obviously when we look at all these pictures of these buildings, um, in, in, in both areas, uh, some are, they have high potentials. They really do. And I think with what we're trying to do by policy-driven approaches, it may not solve it right away, but it's like Bellflower downtown, right? Council members who were sitting here in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen and, or was it twenty seven or twenty oh eight, twenty ten? Twenty ten. They had a vision, right? They went and did a tour and they brought that vision back out here. And, and it started with a vision with policy changes. And so that's what can happen here. So I'm excited to see it come, come through. So that's it.
I'll just say, at, at this point in time, we really don't have a lot invested. It's a lot of staff time to get to this point.
Yeah.
Other than we hired our writer for, I don't want to call him a consultant, but information, it's special jobs, special projects and whatnot. So we haven't spent a lot of money. Now we're at the point where I believe that staff can come up with a scope of work, and that's why we're at here with the de novo company and, and the hundred and thirty thousand budgeted for it. That's how we got there. When did we talk about this? It was about a year and a half ago or two years ago. It's been a long time.
It has been. Uh, we we did the study session in July of twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
So about two years ago.
Okay. It's hard to remember anymore.
I feel like it's been longer. I feel like it was my first term, second year.
It's like the Oak Center just keeps going and going, huh?
And Mr. Mayor, I want to, I do want to, I did, you know, address some, I want to address some of the comments about, you know, addressing public safety first and other things like that, you know? I think, you know, I want to put on the record that we are, we have a lot of stuff going on towards all that stuff. But this, believe it or not, does, taking action like this and putting work like this and revitalizing the area helps with all those issues. So I just wanted to make that connection, uh, for, for the public or for the audience.
Put a, a lens on it or focus on it.
Right.
Yeah. All right. I know you've been holding back.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I'm installing for you.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your presentation. Um, as you pointed out, the, this idea is just not necessary for an arts district. It's basically what prompted this discussion is to how to recycle, how to redevelop certain areas of Bellflower. And it happened that, um, art district is something that may, that may work out because of the way the, the streets are configured, uh, lots of vacancies, um, proximity to the Oak Center, which is being developed right now, being constructed right now. And one thing that I just kind of found out, uh, there is a hidden gem also on Clark Avenue, which is the Institute of Arts, Music and Science. Right there on the corner of Oak, of Oak and, um, and Clark.
The dental office.
Exactly, right next to dental office. So, so it, it kind of, it kind of lends to itself to be developed as an arts district. Again, don't, don't forget that the main reason for this discussion is how to recycle, how to redevelop, how to reuse these properties because most of these properties along Clark Avenue, they're vacant.
Yeah.
They're vacant. And especially if you look at, um, on the east side of Clark, just north of Oak. I mean, there's, there's a, uh, what they call is a cremation service. I don't know if they're doing cremation service there, right in the corner. So anyway, um, speaking of de novo, um, consulting, have they done any project for Bellflower?
They have. And I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that in my presentation. Um, they previously helped staff, um, update our sign regulations. That was probably five or so years ago. And then they are currently doing work for us, which is they're developing a specific plan for the Hollywood Sports Park property.
Ah, okay.
Uh, to allow for mixed use on that site.
Okay. How was their first project that you mentioned? Is it a good project that came up?
Um, it is, yeah. They did a lot of research in terms of, uh, looking at other cities on what they allowed for. They did some community outreach for us at the time related to signage, um, and ultimately, uh, provided some recommendations which are currently in your sign code or our sign code.
Are, are you pleased with the quality of the work?
Yes. And I will say that, um, with the, when we reached out to them to obtain a proposal, they have worked on a lot of different kinds of overlays for different cities before. So they are well-versed in terms of writing an overlay, what it consists of, and what to include in it.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. And I, I would say that, uh, I, I'm fully supportive of this, um, recommendation from staff because I think we need to do something about this area. And this could be only the catalyst of other things that we can do in different areas of the city. If this becomes successful, we can, you know, nothing will kind of prevent us from doing, not this art project, but a different kind of industry or focus in a different area of the city. So I think it's a good start. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, my only suggestion would be to Mr. Coops's question about field trips. If that's something the council's interested, I would suggest, um, rather than increasing costs with a consultant, we can coordinate that as staff and perhaps with some advice from the consultant as to where we could do that. But if that's something you're interested, more than happy to do that if, if you'd like.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Mayor. Let me add something. Uh, because I'm, I'm very familiar with the Long Beach Art District. I just want to make sure, I just want to caution everyone that the art district doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah. No, it's a long
Uh, the artistic in Long Beach took hundred years to develop from what it is now. Because I interviewed a couple of places in Long Beach, it's hundred years.
How old do you hope to get, Sonny?
Uh, I expect to live forever, so.
This sounds biblical.
And the same, the same thing with, the same thing with the LA Arts District. I'm familiar with that.
Took a long time.
It took a long time. So, uh, I just want to make sure that we temper our expectation. It will not happen overnight. Okay.
We're planting a seed. We are planting a seed.
Yes, exactly. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could you put back up, uh, there was a photo you had of, an example of what is on Clark Street. That was probably about Los Angeles Street and
There it is, or one of them.
Yeah. So, you know, the history guy. Many, like, that building there that says tax on it, when I was a kid, that was George's lamp stock, shop. So if you had a broken lamp, you took it in there. Now, there's a house behind that. And, uh, so when you buy that property, you not only get the front, which was the store, but you get a residence behind it. Now, if you go right next to it, there's the same steel. It used to be a, uh, real estate office, and before that, it was a chiropractor. Right behind it is a house. And so you'll see more of that on Clark Street that it was a residential street originally, then they built these buildings out in front. Now, if that lends itself to having a arts deal where people could actually live on the property in which they are presenting art, we have something kind of special, but, but that's what we have here. Uh, down on the bottom here, that was a, a wedding chapel on the corner of, uh, Maple Street. Remember the chapel of the wedding bells? Again, uh, many churches were started in that building. Um, but there's a little bit of history here that we can title utilize to try to make this work.
Right.
Uh, but I just thought I'd share that with you.
The cremation is this one. That's a cremation service.
No, I'm sure they're doing it right there in the building.
Exactly.
So you're saying it's already zoned mixed use?
Yeah, it basically is. And, but that's why Clark became such a different kind of street.
Makes sense.
It was houses, and they say, hey, we can put a business out here. And this is all done before there was a city of Bellflower. It was county. And they said, oh, go ahead and put a business out in front. And next to this guy was Berry's Market where the, uh, uh, Cleveland bought that and developed that, uh, shopping center on the corner. That was a neighborhood market and the guy lived behind it. And next to that was a pet store, and the guy lived behind it. I mean, that, that was all the way that went along that street there. Go up a little farther, on the other side of Oak, you'll see a house there. And you'll see a guy that, I think it was a pharmacy for a while. And now it's a, a place that you can get furniture. Uh, but there's, we've got a mixed use thing going that might lend itself towards an art district. It's not strictly retail.
Yeah. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll
Yeah, I think Sonny should.
I'd be glad to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Hope you get a second.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize city manager to execute, uh, agreement now file number eight oh five point two with de novo planning group for the preparation of an arts district overlay zone related general plan amendment and environmental clearance.
Second.
Motion on the floor, Mayor Protim Sunny Santinez, and a second by council member Sanchez. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Santinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
All right. Anybody have any recusals for the consent calendar? We're on the homestretch.
Mm-hmm.
Cheat sheet here. No.
You don't want to pull anything?
Anybody like to pull anything? I don't look like we have any recusals. Anybody want to pull anything? And then, and I just, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim and Santinez, and a sec, and a second by council member Coops. Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay. Where am I? All right. Council reports. Councilmember Morse, you have anything you want to share with us tonight?
Um, I did go to the National Night Out and it was nice seeing Sergeant Ferguson. So, um, yeah, that's it. I just had a good time walking around.
What about council member Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, want to thank all of staff, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and everyone who's made the summer festivities and events possible. Uh, we know that it's a lot of work, but the community thanks you. Uh, we thank you and, uh, and, uh, just want to say, great, great job, PJ and, and company. Um, and with that, uh, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protim, uh, Santa Inez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to piggyback on council member Sanchez's comment about, um, the summer events. It, I think, uh, the last event was last Thursday, uh, last week. So it was a very successful, um, summer. And, um, I just want to add that, um, a lot of comments have been, I received a lot of comments especially on the, the selection of the bands that played at the street fest. Uh, good quality bands and everybody was pleased.
Yes.
Uh, and also I want to welcome back Sergeant Ferguson. Thank you for coming back. And, um, on a side note, I'd like to, um, request the council to adjourn this meeting uh, in memory of Michael Apousen. Uh, Michael Apousen was born on August fifteenth, nineteen forty-three in Coronadal, South Cota Bato, Philippines, and passed away on June twenty-seven at the age of eighty-one. Michael began professional, his professional journey as a teacher in the Philippines and later served as a budget analyst at CHAT thirty-one thirty-eight, a ship repair facility for the Subic Naval Base for twenty-three years. During his tenure at SRF, which was integral to the logistical and maintenance support of the US Navy, particularly during the, the periods of the Vietnam War and the Cold War, Michael displayed a relentless work ethic and commitment to his responsibilities. After leaving the Philippines, he continued to contribute significantly to his work as a unit manager at Kaiser Permanente in Bellflower and Downey for over twenty years. Michael took immense pride in his family, especially his beloved wife Flor for sub, forty-seven years, and his two sons, Noah and Noe. He was an avid reader and loved classical music, worship songs, and he spent the fifties and the sixties. He valued spending quiet time and quiet and quality time at home with his family. He survived with his lovely wife, uh, Flor, Flor and children. Noah married to Sharon and Noe married to Adeline. Uh, Michael will be remembered for his contributions to education, relentless work ethic, and the love of his family. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Apousen family. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as we look at trying to improve some of the thoroughfares, I look at abandoned signage, which is a real vexation because we have some, on Lakewood Boulevard, there's a guy adverti, at Flower and Lakewood advertising Admiral televisions. Now, they went out of business nineteen seventy-two.
I thought it was an antique store.
Well, and you know, here is Admiral television. Over the, and another one is
Lakewood.
Uh, Lakewood and Flower.
Across from Team C, kind of.
And another one is, uh, as we develop our most southern areas of Bellflower, those immense signs that are on Affordable Treasures used to be a car lot. And now we're trying to get different activities going on there that are all positive. They got the new restaurant over there where, uh, Magdalena's once was and, uh, and the signs need to be restored that says Affordable Treasures on it, or it should be eliminated that says Used Car Lot on it. But it's a massive, massive sign that's been abandoned and looks like the dickens. So I think that if we could make a concerted effort to get these signs around Bellflower, which there are quite a few in conformity, or get rid of them. That's just a suggestion that I think you guys would support me on because you'll, you know the ones that are bugging you. Second thing on my list, and we all are aware of it, you saw it all over Facebook, how our Veterans Memorial was vandalized. And that's all, you know, that's like a sacred place in Bellflower. And for the, to have the vandalism occur on the centerpiece of the soldier there, we need to get with it and get that fixed. I don't want to give in to the homeless to make them think that, uh, oh, we got you on that one. But, uh, and PJ, do you have any idea the expense that, that, what we spent to put that in? I know you were, had your hands on putting that memorial together, and that happened five, six, seven years ago. But I just think that we should get on trying to fix it.
I, we're, we're already on it. We're, we're trying to do everything we can to get it, especially by Memorial Day or, uh, Veterans Day. But I, I, the cost of that particular piece was somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they took it to a recycler and they gave him seventy-five dollars for it.
So, we know all this, this metal goes to recyclers to melt it down is, you know, I think the recyclers are almost treated like pawn shops sometimes, you know, and they're, they're checked regularly, I would hope. But the bronze plaques that we get stolen through our town has names and stuff on it. You just, you know, they cut it up in little pieces. You can't read it, I guess. I don't know, and it goes, but I, you know, is, is it a state of California problem with the recyclers that nobody cares? Don't body hold anybody accountable or they're not checked enough? I don't know. But desecrating the Veterans Memorial is not acceptable. But I don't know what to do about it.
That staff is on it and that you like to get it done by Veterans Day. Uh, but it's, the whole town reverberated with that on Facebook, like, how in the world did that occur? And I really thought stupidly that the homeless left that, or whoever took it, after five years were thought that they would leave it alone, you know, treat it like a church. Not to say we don't get graffiti on churches, but I thought that they might have some honor with that, but obviously not. Um, but anyway, I just think that we need to deal with it quicker.
It's the bad actors that we let run the town that steal all the copper wire out of our parks, all our bronze plaques. Um, we don't do anything about them. We let them camp at the outskirts of our town on our, um, borders. And I think my staff knows exactly what I'm talking about, and I'm not going to go into it, but we don't do nothing about it. I've asked, I've asked. And so maybe this is a wake-up call for us to try to get something done and stop this. It's eighty percent of the people wanted around our town are not invited by our laws. You know, they're just trying to get a drug fix, and until we do something with that or society changes, we're never going to do anything with it. It's, you know, we're up here, we're voted in. Um, we need to change our thinking because I can holler all I want, it's one person that don't get done. And with that, I think we just need to move on.
Well, I didn't mean to set you off.
You have anything to add?
No, no, I totally agree with you. I'm glad to hear that we have a plan on replacing that.
Uh, I'm gonna call for adjournment tonight and I'm going to call for adjournment tonight in memory of Michael Apusen to our next regular meeting, Bellflower City Council, at 5:30 PM on Monday, August 25. We are adjourned.
I waited till you said it and I wrote it.
I go, I'm...
You got it, you got it.
I was paying attention so hard to you.
Good job.